A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I mean, we're need approval that minutes from November third meeting.
Make a motion to approve this meeting.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
Alright.
Uh, the only thing I got is, uh, I did talk to Comcast the other day and final, uh, design will be coming in for what they're wanting to do in town with the fiber. One thing they did ask, and I told him I'd have to talk to you guys, they would like to know about using the old pole yard. Uh, as far as renting that, they said probably two, three months for, uh, drop for their equipment, so they'd have somewhere to take your lock up. So I didn't know if you guys would be interested in that or not, um, I told Mitch I would get back with him after we had council meeting and let him know kind of where you guys were at, if he needed to discuss or if it was something they could use.
Has R and C totally vacated that property?
Yes.
Would it affect you at all? I mean, are you using?
I don't think so. I think the only thing I told him, we could keep them to one side and in that way we could use it for right now because we're gonna put millions over there and then we're gonna haul our snow off again this winter to to get rid of it, so we can keep it out in the middle of town better, but we haven't started moving equipment or nothing we want to yet, so.
But when, when is that supposed to?
Uh, he wasn't sure. I haven't got final design yet, so I'm assuming probably gonna be after the first year.
Okay.
You know, probably January, certainly January, so probably first part of January, they're gonna wanna use that, but he's just wanting to try to get things lined up. We're gonna have three crews come in, uh, need to set things because they'll be directional board, so truck and trailer, that kind of stuff.
I guess we have more information. About that. Yeah.
So I guess, are you, uh, is he wanting permission, wanting to know if we're gonna allow them now or?
Yeah, I think he's just wanting to know if that drop, if that yard could be, you know, if they, if they get it. I, you know, unless you guys, what, what else would you need to know on, on what, I mean, they're just waiting on final design for it to come to me. And then once we see final design and then, I mean.
What do you think?
I mean, price and term.
No problem with it, under your direction, you know.
Well, I told him we'd keep a double padlock, that way we'd have our lock and their lock on it, then, you know, um, I just didn't know what you wanted like to rent it out for per month or whatever, or what's your guys' thoughts, or if you don't, you don't have to make a decision, not if you wanna think about it, that's fine, I just, I need to let him know one way or another, that, you know.
A hundred dollars a year.
Hundred dollars a year? Oh, it's too big.
I mean, my first thought is five hundred dollars a month with a ninety, ninety day contract to be extended monthly after that. Just my thought.
There's no problem with that.
Supposedly we need to have a motion.
Uh, let, let's do this. Let me have Jim put together an agreement, because Comcast is gonna want an agreement.
Yeah, we're gonna have.
So I'll have to put together an agreement.
But we are intending to take, they could use that, possibly, we're just waiting on final documents with an agreement from our attorney, so I'm, I'm gonna let him know.
Ten four.
Okay.
Uh, ordinance first reading twenty twenty five dash six.
Okay, this, um, is the ordinance to integrate the volunteer fire department as part of the town. I did not write this, I had nothing to do with it. This was, um, Jim's, uh, Williams's, uh, documentation. As he's been working on this, uh, for quite a while with our municipal advisor, so this is up to you to basically look at, and if you wanna make changes, I would probably suggest you contact Jim yourself, because like I said, rather than me being the in-between, uh, go to, straight to him for any concerns and so forth, because he'll be able to address them better than I can.
And this has to be decided by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, we have to have it.
To let that just by the end of the year.
So that, that gives us three meetings after tonight.
Alright, quick question. Does the department, as it stands now, if, if I remember correctly, they give you two budgets, one for the town, one for township.
This is now will.
Will this be one?
This will be one, it is integrated into the general fund.
Okay.
And so, but I still have, if you guys would've looked at your budget reports, your appropriations, you'll see that I did break out. I will still keep township fire fuel, the maintenance on the trucks. Anything that's associated with those trucks will still be kept separate, because the townships own all of them for one.
Right.
So I will be keeping, I will within that budget be keeping them separate, but they still will be, all of it will be a part of the general fund.
Like they'll just be presenting us with one budget.
One budget, that will be in twenty twenty seven. Well, no, we did it in twenty twenty six, but that was just like me and Jim and all of us working that budget, just to get us to where we are now. Now in twenty twenty seven, they will be putting the budget together themselves and then.
Does, does the trustees have to sign off on this?
Not on the budget, no.
No, I understand.
But yes, because see, my next problem, like, not my next problem, but my next step is I have to, we are at the end of our, um, fire protection agreement with the, the townships, um, uh, December thirty first, so we have to come back again with another agreement like we always do. We usually do it for every two years so that we can revise this, and then, um, they sign that after you guys approve the agreement. Then they all come in and they sign it, and then I have to give them copies of it.
Then I have this one other question that, that has popped up, uh, say after this all gets integrated and everything, uh, the fire department says we need a new township truck. Is that gonna be here again in the township, uh, title, be, be in their name or?
Well, nothing that regarding that is gonna change.
Okay.
And then their stipulation in the contract we have with them, they are to be notified if the department makes a, a single purchase of ten thousand dollars or more, which we do, like whenever, like when they were getting ready to buy the med truck, hey, this is what's gonna happen, so, and then, then they can kind of the meetings and discuss it with you guys, they're free to come to meetings, like, just like anyone else.
Right.
When they have issues, so, but that's, that's been what we've done the last couple of years, where anything, a, a single purchase over ten grand, they do at least get notified that that's happening.
Okay.
And we're currently working on, Jim and I are working on the employee handbook as how it, because you guys are still actually considered, I know this sounds crazy, but even though your employees are still considered a volunteer fire department, so we're working through the different classifications that are stipulated in the handbook and so forth, so this has been something we've been looking at for quite a while. I just said you can look this over, um, digest it, do whatever, but if you have very specific questions, I would suggest getting with Jim, because like I said, he's the one who, who wrote this with the idea of what's coming.
I have a quick question.
Really?
Ross or Matt can answer this. When it comes to fire, how do you guys do it?
So currently, in October of every year, we nominate people for individual offices, chief, first chief, first assistant, second assistant, secretary, treasurer, and then in November, we vote on who we want. Um, I think it takes a two thirds majority to put that person in office, so.
Is there minimum requirements to be the chief within anybody on the fire department?
Not anybody on the department. I think you have to be a member two years to hold the officer's position.
Correct.
And, and as I stated with Ross, I don't know if you crashed, because he was asking me some questions, um, I don't, if we, if, I don't think that we could, we could modify that part that, you know, you guys as the fire department will nominate a fire chief from your group and then bring it to the council and let the council, you know, give their blessings that that's your, that's your fire chief. But also, you, they are now the, you know, it's one of those things that we don't allow that with the other, well, you know, yeah, we can kind of. So, but we, I don't think that, where that would be a problem.
To be quite honest with you, without his chief, that's the way we handle it. I brought the state of officers to the, to the town council and they approved him or this.
So I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I can have him kind of reword that as well. That's no problem.
Other than that, I read through it and it all makes sense to me and it seems correct going forward.
And I did send the insurance part of it to Mac and to make sure that everything that's stipulated statutory wise is what we have covered, and it is, in fact, we're better than what state statute recommends, so we're covered there.
Anyone do anything else?
Move it on.
Uh, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash five, this would be the salary.
So the only changes, the changes I've made, um, compared to what we did, what we talked about last week, or the last meeting, I should say. Um, Carl, um, since he'll, um, be number two and Todd's, um, right-hand man, I guess. Um, I increased his pay fifty dollars per pay. I did add a fully forty dollar per pay, um, increase once they graduate the academy. Because we used to be like thirty nine dollars and ninety six cents, which basically was a thousand dollar increase, however, trying to get twenty six pays to equate evenly into a thousand dollars is pretty hard, so it actually came up to like nine hundred ninety four dollars and ninety six cents. But other than that, everything else is pretty much stayed the same from the previous ordinance. And I know Todd's not here, and this is why I'm gonna bring this up now, because I know he is going to bring his recommendation for hire for John's position. Um, I believe this person, and Jeff, you might be able to clarify this or even you, he already has academy. So we can table this one other time, once he gives you guys the name of the person he wishes to replace John, I can go ahead and add that forty dollar per pay to the base salary, because he's already graduated the academy, or we can leave it at fifty two. That's up to you guys.
Well, hopefully he makes it here.
Um, depend, I mean, it's up to you guys. But we do have to pass it by the la, uh, at the, by the third, the second meeting in December. We have, we have to have one in place.
So I guess we just, what, suspend the rules, that what you'd have to do?
No, because you're on the second reading, so you, you automatically can go to this.
So we can look into approving that, or we can put it off until, I guess, the next meeting?
But that's the only open question is whether or not we have forty dollars in.
Correct, correct. Now, if you wanna leave it as such, we can go ahead and do the new hire, as the new hire, just leave it fifty two, or I can come back with adding the forty dollars per pay to the third reading.
As far as the new hire, I think it's got the cabinet, but.
Yeah, I disagree with that, definitely him higher than Nick Brown, is that correct?
Um, but yeah, and the thing of it is Nick, um, Nick goes to the academy in January. So for the time being, he's, uh, because this guy has, I already got academy, so we gotta send Nick yet, so Nick would get the forty dollar increase once he attends the academy.
Yeah, okay.
I wanna do it that way, and then I'll just, and then I'll just, uh, because by that time, we'll know the guy's name and I can add, put him officially on the salary ordinance, and then we're done. So.
Anyone do anything else on this? Anyone wanna move on it?
I would just wait, I'll, I'll do it and fix that and then we'll.
Resolution amendment.
So this is to clarify, after I attended the clerk treasurer's school, um, now, we won't have to do a training agreement for the new hire, since he's already got the academy, but this is just for a cleanup type thing. Um, the tier one pre-notice, or the, the one we just did, it only applies to tier one. State statute only applies it to tier one, and that was clarified at the school I attended the week before last. So what I did was I did the tier one, if we ever decide we're gonna go do that, at least it's already approved, and then the tier two, and I did correct it, some of you guys noticed on the tier two thing, Jerry called me, and so did Ross. So it's been fixed on the, the one, the official exhibits, so the wording I did. Because I updated, because I hadn't been updated in, since twenty seventeen with new, the new costs, send them, so.
Those costs, were they pretty much generated by local training plus ILEA cost?
No, what I do with that is, okay, so tier two is ten weeks, so I take ten weeks of salary, ten weeks of fire commit, ten weeks of perf, um, insurance, I figure in two and a half months of insurance. Um, also, I went and I got the cost that ILEA charges us, plus I put in there, uh, we have to also, um, clothe them. We have to pay for the uniforms, and then we also have to send the ammunition with them. So it roughly, it turned out to like fifteen thousand, I think you'll see that, like, for ten weeks, it's like fifteen thousand dollars for tier two.
How's that, how does it read? Is it completion of the academy or once they enter the academy?
No completion, you have to be certified.
What, I like Derek's question, what would happen if we hire an officer, we send him to ILEA, week three, they lateral to Brookville, we're, we're stuck with the bill?
Or even drops out of the academy.
Yep, no, it's basically, it only relates to if they complete the academy.
They become a sworn officer and leave.
And leave. Because we've sent guys before and that, they didn't make it, but it didn't cost us that much, really, because and trying to track that, you know, it's only made it three weeks, whatever, but, uh, we've only had, I think, one guy that started academy and didn't finish.
Well, I guess if there's no further, we'll need a motion.
And the motion would be for the tier one only.
No, for just the try, the actual agreements as they are working, this is not, you know.
It doesn't include exhibit B?
No, it does.
It does, so, so it's either tier one or tier two, depending what's applicable.
To that person.
So we're adopting, okay.
This is just actually you're approving the agreements.
Okay.
Just, you know, is what you're doing, and the paperwork we're using for this.
Okay. Make a motion to approve resolution amendment twenty twenty five dash sixteen, adopting policy for reimbursement training costs.
I'm gonna say it.
Second.
All favor.
Alright.
Matt, can you call Todd and see if he thinks, go make a statement.
Yeah, I'm still.
Call him a question.
My miscellaneous business, um.
Hi, um, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Allison Webb, um, I'm with the Union County Foundation. We have, um, just recently created a Main Street organization, um, for revitalization of downtown. And, um, the organization is called Liberty Can Community Action Network. So we are, um, looking to be considered into Oak Ridge Downtown Affiliate Network, um, in order to become an Indiana accredited Main Street, where we can apply for grant funding down the road. It's gonna be twenty twenty six or beyond. Um, we missed the mark, uh, for twenty twenty five's application, um, and so we're looking to, um, apply for twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven year. Um, what that means for us as a community, we can potentially receive additional grant funding from the state, hopefully as long as Main Street Organization funding still exists, um, but that's our hope, um, for the state of Indiana, so. Um, what that means, um, why I'm here tonight, we need a letter of recommendation from our, um, town council, um, saying that it's okay and that we're, um, that you guys support what we're doing. Um, and so, um, that's what I brought here tonight, if we can get a signature on that, or if you guys have any questions, let me know. Um, and then the only other thing I was gonna bring up, um, as well, I emailed Melissa about, we have a little fundraiser going on, um, for the month of December, and, um, we're doing anything but snow, snowman contest, uh, where we're asking organizations, businesses, families, small groups to, um, just brighten up our downtown by making snowmen out of whatever the heck they wanna make the snowmen out of. And we're gonna do a little community voting, um, but we were just thinking about displaying these and getting people to walk down our, our main street, things like that, so, um, didn't know if there was anything in place or anything restricting us from having the snowmen displayed on the sidewalk down Union Street or down, um, any of the other streets, or if we should just utilize the green space next to the children's library that the foundation owns, we can do that, just, we just wanna make sure we weren't in anybody's way or, or causing any havoc with putting anything on the sidewalks.
When will that start and finish?
We would put them out for display on December sixth, which is the Christmas in our hometown day. Um, and then we have a request that everything be cleaned up before the end of December. It's gonna be on whoever builds the snowmen, to, it'd be their responsibility to take care of them, um, which we've already communicated to anybody that signs up. Um, I'll go around town and, or trash whatever is not going away by the December thirty first date.
Matt, how's that affect snow?
Well, I'm sorry, it's.
How's that affect snow removal?
So they're wanting to put them on the sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Well, legally.
Legally, it's up to the storefront to clean their sidewalk.
Yes, but also then, you also gotta keep in mind, you have to keep a five foot width path for handicap accessible. So they couldn't block any pathways, because that's like what we did in Alcoa Coffee, when they wanted to put their, their bench out there. It has to keep, you have to keep at least a five foot wide area for them to pass through. You can't block, you won't be able to block the sidewalk that way, so.
So we can put a size restriction on the snowman.
That or put them up in the right of way, if you got closer, you could put them into the right of way, so that's as long as.
Probably best to have them closer to the building?
Yes, yes, yep.
Uh, can we see that letter?
What would be some of the things that the grant company would be useful?
Um, it kind of depends, Oak Ridge does different cycles, um, but it could be for storefront facade updates. It could be for, for arts and culture, like a mural, it could be for, um, lighting downtown, it could be for any downtown revitalization. They do cycles, different periodic times of, um, specific things like community block grant, they have, hey, submit your community project for this grant, um, whether it's a playground downtown or whatever is needed in your community, you can apply for those grants um, and potentially receive funding, but we can't even apply if we don't have a Main Street, an Indiana accredited Main Street organization to apply with. So it's, it's kind of a wide, wide array of the things that it could fund potentially, but, um, anything that falls under revitalization.
Didn't we do this a couple years back, something like this?
Are you talking about the?
Like.
No, we did the, where we rehabbed the homes.
Yeah, I would say star, but.
Oh, star, yeah.
Contractor, the.
Yeah, that.
I was thinking, no, I was thinking just a couple years back, as we all went in together, kind of formed an organization, and that's when we also hired a grant writer, and they ended up getting a playground for College Corner and all that, didn't we all go in together and do something like this already?
That I don't recall.
I'm not thinking right.
Uh, I don't recall.
Because it was all talked about how you had to go in together, so you get these grants, because that's what.
That was we, that we hired somebody, we went in together and hired somebody with funds from us, from the county.
Right.
And.
But that would kind of create.
Special projects coordinator.
The special project coordinator, we went in together and did that.
Kind of the same thing, I'm guessing.
Well, this is, the special project coordinator position doesn't exist anymore.
Right.
Which I'm kind of acting as through the foundation, I'm an employee of the foundation. Um, the Main Street organization has its own board, um, I'm just acting coordinator, I'm not technically, I'm not employed by the, the Main Street organization, um, they have their own board, their own bylaws, it's a five one C three. Um, everything, all of that has already been done, um, and so it will remain a five one C three, and it will remain an organization for downtown revitalization. Um, like I said, we may not be able to apply for any grants, we may not be able to, um, we've already chatted with Melissa about it, the, the time that it'll take and the partnership with the town that we would have to have, because we won't be able to receive the funding, it would go to the town. Um, it may be four or five years before we would get a large grant, um, but in order to become an Indiana accredited or move up to nationally accredited, we have to start somewhere.
Yes.
Um, so.
Actually, does it start? Have you read it? You wanna read it?
No, but I, I never just know the.
That's.
Anything we can do to better the community, especially downtown, I think we oughta support that.
Uh, I agree.
If we can get some, uh, in the future, get some money for storefront facades and this type of thing, I'll hold for it.
I agree with you on that. Is it an area you have to designate, some rain blocks?
Yeah, so when we do the application to become, um, an O D N, we do have a designation that we will map out, basically. Um, we have, our board has had a conversation that any walkable business in Liberty is considered a, a downtown Main Street business. We're, that's why we named our, our organization Liberty Can, not Liberty Main Street, because our Main Street's actually this twenty seven and not Union Street, which people consider our Main Street, um, and we have tons of local businesses that need support as well, so on top of the funding that we can get, there's also support for local business, small business, things like that, that we can, um, promote um, for all of our local business owners, so yeah, we will have a map, but it'll be, if you can get there by sidewalk from Liberty, it'll be considered a Main Street business organization.
It sounds like a good deal, but is that, we should learn by Jim before he's signing it? You have any issues, go ahead, silence, whatever you're saying. With that, Derek, I've got a question. I just wanna make sure, so they're asking about Oak Ridge, if we go through the town, will that, would that be a, a problem that could cause, and I'm not saying, I'm not, I guess, I'm just saying, where we couldn't get another water grant? And I'm not saying, I'm not against, I'm just saying, where we couldn't get another water grant? Because it would be going to the town to cover that, you see what I mean?
Yeah, cuz we, we only have so many, what I would call.
Right, we can only have so many grants.
Open grants at, in a period of time.
So I didn't know if that would put us, like, if you guys were getting a grant, then would that take it to where we couldn't do a water or sewer grant then?
Or.
You know, or.
Kinda why, why I wonder if we should get Jim involved and maybe you can answer.
I'm just, I'm just curious, if that, if that would be what they're going to do.
Cuz that's, that, when we met, that was my concern with Allison, dude, like, if, you know, with us, we still have, you know, we want a pump house, a new pump house for.
We got a water tower work.
For the wa, and we need water tower work done, and the sewer plant's gonna need some upgrades here soon.
Or if it's something we can incorporate all into one, you know, I mean, but I'm just saying, if that would take us to a point where we wouldn't be, wouldn't be eligible for Okra Grant, if we went for the, the Main Street to help the business get the facade, we, you know, we might need to do some of that. I just didn't know what that meant to town.
This letter, um, is just supporting us applying, saying, yes, we would like for them to be an accredited Main Street organization. If not, any grant application that we've submitted. Um, we currently don't have any specific project that we would submit a grant application for, we just have to be ready or want to be ready when we're, when we can. Um, and we, as an organization, have already discussed that the, the livelihood of our community, like the water, is way more important than how pretty it looks. So we would obviously wait until there's room for us to get in.
Yeah, no, I'm just making sure, yeah, I'm just.
We're, we were aware of the, the, the limitation on how many grants can, or how many Okra grants can be open at the same time. We would, we would take a step back, um, and not do an application or be involved in it, if there was any worry of, hey, this is gonna put our town out of water for.
Even if you.
A while.
Applied for a grant and were successful, that gets funneled through the town.
Yes.
So we would still have that opportunity to say, no, we don't wanna accept it, and that would put a stop to it, is it?
Yes.
Yep, so if we had another project that we felt took precedent over the revitalization, we'd still have that option as well. I don't think I have an issue with the support letter.
This also helps not only with Okra, if we're a Main, Indiana Main Street Accredited, we can apply for other funding elsewhere. Um, there's other organizations that essentially fund, you know, and it could be a five-hundred-dollar project, a five-thousand-dollar project. Um, but I suppose it helps with the, the vibes in town when people see.
And how old is this board, when was it established?
A couple months, yeah, I've only been with the foundation since April, um, started working on establishing that. So I think officially our five-one-C-three, um, somewhere mid- fall to September.
And who's the head of that board?
Um, the president is Sarah Smith, vice president is, um, Anna Baker. Melody Lynch is acting as our secretary and treasurer. We have a couple of them.
Well, good, sounds like new blood, I don't know any of those.
Melody Lynch, she's the COO of, uh, R E C. And then, um, Sarah Smith, she is a local mom, she lives on Seminary Street, she's president of the PTO, as you call. Anna Baker, her husband works at Matthews.
I do know.
Straight from.
I, I do know.
Yeah, she's, she's in a little bit of everything, you've seen her around.
Good.
Well, if you guys are okay with, you wanna move on, I'll need a motion to approve the support letter. If, and not, then.
I'll make a motion, then we go ahead and sign their, uh, support letter.
Do we have a second?
Also, in favor?
Thank you. Don't need to do anything for the snowmen, just keep it, leave five feet on the sidewalk.
Charlie, five feet, yeah, yep.
Cool.
All right, we're gonna jump back to Todd here. All right, we've done some interviews with some background checks, and I think we've learned a good candidate. He already goes to, to the academy, and some experiences as an officer every year. And I was wondering if you guys, you wanna consider hiring?
Uh, he interviewed well, I'll say that, all the interviews.
All three of them.
They were all three really good interviews, so it was, it was a tough decision, I'll, that's for sure, but. I'm, I'm good with who he's recommending.
I would agree.
How much experience does he have?
I think he's twenty-three, starting.
Twenty-three.
Just a. Come, I think he said coming up on three. And he went through Aleah Whitfree?
Yes.
Ezra?
Yep. Yep, he was, uh, prior to being kind of Jim for that. Yeah, I'm good with it. You guys have questions for Todd about him?
What's his name?
Tanner.
Chief's good with him, he's one excellent with him.
Yep. You agree, Derek? That don't have to be a question, correct?
Yeah, you're just giving your blessings.
Yep.
There you go, there are ones in the grants.
All right, I appreciate it.
What do you expect from this guy?
Uh, I'm, I was gonna make a call tonight, I hope you guys are okay with it. And, and I believe he was putting his two weeks notice in tonight. Possibly tomorrow morning, so first week.
I think you and I talked the first week, run, first week of December. So what I'll do is at the next meeting, I'll bring you guys a salary ordinance, not only for, but for what little he's going to be on twenty-twenty-five's payroll. I think it would be the, the last two of the, of the year, so just something to, getting paid for at least this, the end of twenty-twenty-five.
All right, got anything else? Anyone, got anything else? Thanks for rushing that.
Thanks for clearing up my neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, we swept it up when we get, find the hip to.
Uh, moving on miscellaneous business, the street closure, we're gonna go against the library, we know it. Um, I talked to her, I think she's talked about some also. And talking to her, I do recall some of what we did last year. Uh, we ended up closing down College Corner Seminary, I believe, last year, right? She had people working at other intersections.
Yes.
Cuz we didn't close down all the intersections. Um, but I think we did close that one down during the race, not the whole time, it wasn't from one to seven. It was just during the race, if I remember right.
Right, we shut it down about, yeah, for at twenty-seven, so they can't be coming down to the pier.
Yeah.
So. Yeah. Um, but she is gonna have people at other intersections. And if we can help close any intersection that may help her, she would appreciate it. The other, now, it's kinda what it was, it wasn't closed from one to seven the whole time.
Derek, one thing I do have, though, to bring up.
Yes.
Um, we're, with having two functions at the same time, I'm running really low on barricades, cones, road closed stuff, and my budget's getting like, I'm about at the end of it, because we're at the end of the year. I do need to try to go to clean mode, if there's a possible way, if Melissa can find any more, more money for me, I hate to go ask that, but I just don't have enough stuff, and that's what's tended to happen more, is we're having two functions in the same day at different spots, or like two things going on. I just don't have that stuff, because we don't really charge for them, and we got stuff of our own out, so I mean, like cones and barricades, different places. So I don't know if there's a possibility you guys might be able to.
Close.
If you guys can flow me some.
I kept, I kept, now that I've got Omera Pay, I know what's left over, so there is some money, like, we can do it out of category, transfer to cover.
We did come over, but on the page.
Yeah, we did.
So, but, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking if we can get some more stuff to set aside for.
Yeah.
Because it's growing this way, we're getting more and more requests for street closures and, you know, things, and we're just running out. I mean, we're just not, some of that stuff's old, it gets tore up, whatever, but, um, so, yeah, if we can, if we could do that, that'd be great, I don't think it'd be a problem, I can get to Westchester and pick it up well before what we need to, it's just, I just, I need to get some more funding, so I can get some more of that kinda stuff. So.
Yeah, so, any, is there any concern, conversations you have had with?
No, the only thing I told Julie was she needs to check and make sure though, too, is because Market Street, past our garage, turns into county, county property.
I spoke to her.
So I did tell her, I said, you probably need to go get the blessing from the county commissioners, that we go ahead and block that off. Because that was one crucial thing, we did close that road there, so nobody could turn it off at twenty-seven last year.
Right.
Um, so I told her, I said, you will have to talk to them, like, we can't, you know, the board can't, or I can't make that decision. Um, that was the only thing I told her, was we'd have to, you know, she would have to check and make sure it was okay with County Highway.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to her about that, the commissioners, I told her, you know, that Jeff Bowers.
I told her to talk to Jeff or Howard, he'd wanna see what they say, and.
I mean, that's, um, that, that's obvious.
I don't think it's gonna be, like you said, for the whole day, just for their run.
Yes.
But, um, you know, I told her, I said, we can't make that total call.
Yep.
On that, so it's counted properly.
Any other questions, concerns? They have people, paragraph.
Yeah, so what, so what we did, um, last year, we provided them like two or three cones at, at these major intersections. And then we also provided them with vests, I think Todd gave me about five or six vests, or the safety vest. We got four or five out of our department, and then that way people were at those intersections. And then if a car needed to get through that lived on that area, they just moved the cones back and forth for them. They just kinda kept track of, of that kinda stuff, that's, that's what we did, um, she asked me if I would take a, another ride with them this year and lay it out again. And I told her I didn't have a problem doing that, so.
Everybody good with it? My motion, I would approve their request for street closures. Any other materials they need? So need through my app, Matt, this one. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Favor?
All right.
All right, and then we got Mesothelioma sent a request to be added to the website.
Yeah, this is, they've been kind of emailing me just about every week. Can we, can we tie to your website, you know, about, you know, the, you know, you see the commercials about mesothelioma and the lawsuits and stuff, and I'm like, technically, that's council's call, personally, I guess, I'm not for it, cuz I've talked to a couple of them, they're like, you know, what happens if their website gets hacked, you know? I don't wanna get us into the, I don't wanna say this. Where we're advertising things all, all the time, not only just for Mesothelioma, but that'll be the other people, like, well, can we piggyback on your website? I don't want us to be an advertising station, our job is to be informational to the people of the town of Liberty.
My first thought was this would be better, if, if anybody does, it'd be better for the Union County Health.
Yeah.
I, I'm not in favor of it.
Yeah, I'm not either. It's not the only thing. I agree.
Okay. Then lastly is your bank reconciliations for October.
Any motion on that?
Yeah.
If you guys have looked over it, or have questions? Moving the motion, then we, uh, accept the, uh, bank group consolidation report. Say, call it in right now? Anyone else have any other business they need to discuss? If not, uh, I'll take your motion to the jury.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna let you off at these, where are we, I'm opening the library.
They got the road open tonight.
Okay.
They do have it open tonight, the problem I got with it is, though, asphalt plan already shut down and it didn't pave the road. So I got a feeling that could be a little bit of a chore, we're gonna have a chore trying to get the road paved, so. Yep, so I, I got a phone call in, I just haven't received one back yet. The road is opened up, they've moved everything up on, bad part is they moved it up a lot up on the sidewalk over by the church.
Oh, I know.
So you can't even get down the sidewalk, so I'm gonna have to have that conversation tomorrow and find out what, what plan is to get that moved.
Okay.
So.
Streets, we're on that street.
You know, Jared, I don't know, nobody even told me, I, I went up blind, just seeing that it was open, they never contacted me, so.
Probably needs to be, their sweeper, sweeping.
Oh, it is, our sweeper's already, it's winterized, ours is already put up for the year, so it'll have to be theirs.
No, I, they.
Yeah.
That needs to be swept.
Yeah, it's gotta be cleaned up, and that's why I said nobody really contacted me, I just went up by after work and seen that it was being open, and I made a phone call and nobody's called me back.
Yeah, I noticed the two, I was like.
Yep, so I'll, I'll be in contact tomorrow with somebody, be an architect or whoever, so somebody will be getting, somebody will be getting called.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions, Jared? So, say it. All right. All better?
All right.